Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Army-Navy Drive Complete Streets 90% Design Public Hearing. My name is Nate Graham. I'm a public engagement specialist with the Division of Transportation at Arlington County's Department of Environmental Services. And we'll begin this presentation momentarily. We're just going to give folks another couple of minutes to join the virtual presentation. Okay, I have two minutes past 12 o'clock, so we'll get started. I want to take a moment before we hand over the reins of this presentation to our project manager, Mr. John Lawler, to introduce you to the Teams Live platform and show you how the Teams Live Q&amp;A will work. So we are using Microsoft's Teams Live platform. In the top right-hand corner of your screen, you'll see a little pair of speech bubbles with a question mark. This is the question and answer feature. This is where you'll be able to ask questions during the presentation and afterwards in the question and answer session. We'll be addressing questions throughout as best we can. But if we get a question that we want to make sure everyone is able to hear, we'll probably hold that for the Q&amp;A section, and I will take those questions to John. So please feel free to drop your questions in throughout the presentation. We will do our best to answer them quickly or at least provide you a response to say we will be answering that question in the Q&amp;A feature. As a reminder, this meeting is part of a public engagement window at 90% design for this project. You'll be able to submit your feedback via email and by phone. And instructions for submitting that feedback are available on the slide with Teams Live instructions, which we will show again at the end of this presentation for the Q&amp;A session. And it will be available on the project webpage now at Arlington County's projects webpage. So without further ado, I'm going to hand off the presentation on the project to our project manager, Mr. John Lawler. John, we need you to unmute. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Nate. Sorry about that. And thank you all for your, we really appreciate y'all's interest in the project. And we're sorry we couldn't do this meeting in person to talk through the project with everyone. You know, we'd also like to thank the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, NBTIA, for providing our funding for construction of this project. This project is fully funded. So basically, I'll start the presentation by giving like an overview of the project, then introduce the 90% design plan and talk about how we changed it from the 30% design plan, go over the right-of-way acquisition, talk a little bit about the traffic signal operations that will be coming to this corridor, and then finish on the environmental, the project cost, and the project schedule. You know, this project is basically located between Pentagon City and Crystal City along Army-Navy Drive between South Joy Street and 12th Street South. This map right here is the county's 2020 Bicycle Comfort Map. So it kind of gives you a sense of where this project's located. It's located between two metro rail stations, Pentagon City Metro Rail Station and the Pentagon Metro Rail Station. It provides a major east-west, you know, protected bike lane link for this corridor. As you can see here, there currently really isn't a lot of east-west facilities. You'd have to go all the way down to South Hay Street to do that movement. So the existing conditions of Army-Navy Drive, it was previously a BDOT street. BDOT transferred most of it to Arlington County. And back in 2010, when they transferred Columbia Pike to Arlington County, the posted speed limit's 35 miles per hour. You know, it's a road that seems like it was designed really a long time ago. It's really primarily designed to funnel automobiles to and from I-395. It's got really heavy peak directional traffic and heavy peak hour traffic. It doesn't have a lot of traffic during the midday hours and the non-peak hours. It's a lot of commuters that are using this road. The Army-Navy Drive-South Hay Street intersection, which is pictured at the top right, that had the second most collisions in the county in 2016. It's usually ranked, you know, second place every year. There's currently no bike facilities, and there's very minimal green space. This corridor is pretty much all paved over, very little, you know, pervious area. It also has really poorly defined sidewalks, particularly on the north side, where you'll find yourself just suddenly trapped without even like crosswalks to get back across to the south side of the road. There's really not any signage telling you that you should probably be using this sidewalk, you know, since there's no way to get back to the south side. The current land use is along the corridors, the Pentagon parking lots, the DEA secure office building, there's a hotel, and then some multifamily apartments and, you know, large shopping center retail at Pentagon Row and Pentagon City Mall. Here's a crash history map for the three-year period from 2014 to 2016. It's to scale, so you can see, as I mentioned before, that the Army-Navy Drive-South Hay Street intersection is the second highest amount of crashes in the county of any intersections. So you can see how that, you know, the crash day there really stands out. And you see about a quarter of the crashes are injury crashes. You know, our project goals here is to redesign Army-Navy as a complete street, basically between the existing right-of-way. And, you know, to do that, we're going to narrow the existing travel lanes down appropriately. We're going to, you know, really change all the traffic signal phasing there to eliminate conflicts. And so one of the ways we do that is we're going to do protected-only left-turn phasing that goes for the westbound left-turn movements. We're also going to upgrade all the street lighting and traffic signals and plant a lot of street trees. Street trees are proven treatment to slow traffic speeds down. We're also going to expand and improve multimodal access by providing new crosswalks, more accessible curb ramps and things like that. In this project, we're greatly reducing transit travel times along the corridor by adding dedicated transit lanes. And, you know, another goal of the project is to relieve traffic congestion. This is a big score and part of the NBTIA funding. So, you know, we're relieving it by really improving the transit travel times and getting people, you know, out of the vehicles to more non-auto modes like walking, biking, and using transit. You know, another goal of the project is to enhance Army-Navy Drive as a gateway to Pentagon City, Crystal City National Landing Area. That our last goal is to reduce the stormwater runoff, because I mentioned before, it's really paved over. And, you know, this project, we're building a two-way protected cycle track along the south side of Army-Navy Drive between 12th and South Joy Street. So these two pictures on the right give you a sense of what that will look like. This is the existing two-way cycle track over in Boston along Fairfax Drive by Marymount's buildings. You know, so when we started this project, we had to do a really rigorous traffic study because, you know, we were basically reconfiguring the entire street from curb to curb for the whole section. So we had to figure out, like, you know, what all we needed, how many lanes, how many turn lanes, things like that, how it all operated. So we did all this micro-simulation model, and you can see, you know, we modeled all the bike movements, all the pedestrian movements, the buses, and things like that. And, you know, we designed it for the 2040 traffic conditions using the, you know, MW-COG. Basically, their travel demand model that forecast all the future buys based on all the approved development that's in the pipeline for the area. And so, you know, what we're proposing here is actually an improvement over not building anything at all for the future conditions. We're reducing delay for all vehicles along the corridor, as you can see here. We're particularly reducing the delay for the transit vehicles. So you can see, like, major reductions in transit travel times along the corridor in the 2020 and 2040 scenarios. Now, I'll talk about how this proposed bike connection fits into the surrounding network. So it's a couple of projects really to highlight here. At the top right of the screen is the Boundary Channel Drive interchange project with 395. That's going to provide a new link to the existing Mount Vernon Trail. So this, you know, this project give you this really great east-west connection that you can take. Basically, from the new Columbia Pike on the top left is also being redone by the federal government, the Eastern Federal Lands. They're putting a two-way cycle track on this project. So you'll be able to take Columbia Pike, go down the shared-use path on Joyce, and then hop on over Army-Navy Drive. We have another project under the Route 1 overpass at 12th Street. But, you know, basically a shared-use path on the north side of the road under the bridge, so that you can take that and hop on the Esplanade or Long Bridge Drive and then hook up to the Mount Vernon Trail. So it's a pretty major, this project's a really major connection piece for the bike network. One of the things we heard at the 30% design meeting, when we had the public meeting, was that people wanted us to extend our project to the west block to get to South Line Street, where we currently have a gap in the protected bike lane network. And so while we couldn't do that with this project due to the federal funding, we did create a new CIP project. And this year's CIP to basically take out the median along that block and put in protected bike lanes. So we actually just started collecting the survey for that this week. So there's people out there. And then kind of going back to what, you know, what we had done previously. We had our first big engagement event was in January 2018, where we did a design workshop showcasing really the concept, design plans, to get feedback on that. And then we followed that up in June 2019 with a design open house. So we've gotten a lot of comments, gotten 246 written comments. Each time we've done a public meeting, we've done a follow-up survey online, so we've gotten 297 survey responses. Some of the key takeaways is that people really don't feel safe walking a bike along Army-Navy Drive currently. And they'd really like to see more connectivity to all the surrounding bike facilities in the Pentagon-Crystal City areas. You know, one of the big changes we've made from the first event was increasing the cycle track width to 12 feet wide. From, it was originally supposed to be 10 feet wide. We've added a bunch of protected intersection elements throughout the corridor. Really, our big goal was to reduce right-hook conflicts between bikes and vehicles turning right, you know, conflicting with the bike crossings, as well as improving the street lighting. You know, at the last open house, we had 85% of the survey respondents basically expressed a positive opinion on, you know, the 30% design plans at that time. So people seemed to really like what we were proposing. So now, just kind of go in block by block for the project. Started on the far west side, near South Joy Street. So this is, if you're at South Joyce Army-Navy looking east at Pentagon Row, this is what you would see. So currently today, it's a seven-lane cross-section. And we're proposing to put the two-way cycle track on the right side of this picture along the south side. And then the curb-side travel lanes will be dedicated bus lanes. And we're also reducing the amount of lanes here from seven to six. So here, so that'd be basically three lanes in each direction. One of those will be a dedicated transit lane, and you'll have the two-way cycle track along the south side. So here's the 90% design plan. Kind of highlight, this is what, a picture of what a dedicated bus lane looks like. This is a recently completed one over at Silver Spring. So you can kind of see, like, we will allow the right-turning vehicles to use these lanes just for that purpose. But other than that, it's really buses only. And we'll paint it red and use the double white striping. We also have a proposed, basically like a side boarding transit island here for the bus stop in front of the Harris Teeter. And that's kind of what that will look like. We're not proposing a shelter at this stop because the primary ridership here is people getting off the buses. Very few people actually boarding the bus at this location. So when you're using this app, you'll just, you know, cross over the two bike lanes and then get onto the bus island. And this island's big enough to hold two separate buses, since, you know, there's a lot of buses that use this stop. Now, I'll talk kind of about how we've changed the 30% design plan to the 90% design plan. So here's a zoomed-in picture of the 90% plan at South Joyce Street and Army-Navy Drive intersection. And on the left is the old 30% concept plan. So one of the things we added was a curb island in the southeast corner. And that's kind of what that looks like. And that was basically to, you know, provide more comfortable queuing space for bicyclists. At this intersection, you can basically go any of the four directions because up north are the shared-use path along South Joyce Street. To the west will be the new protected bike lanes along Army-Navy Drive. To the east are the protected bike lanes that this project is doing along Army-Navy Drive. And then Joyce Street also has just standard bike lanes to the south of it. So we're adding in that curb island for just kind of better protection and queuing space. We also extended the median nose for the east approach here to provide a pedestrian median refuge. We're still accommodating the westbound U-turn movement so that folks can still turn left and get into the Harris Teeter easily. We also are replacing the curb ramps in the northwest quadrant, which we weren't originally proposing. But we basically redesigned all the curb ramps since the 30% design to better meet ADA. Like, one of the big comments we heard at the 30% meeting was that people wanted the, basically the curb ramps aligned to the crossings. So we feel like we've really done that now on the design, as well as widening the ramps wherever possible to accommodate, you know, bikes using them and things like that. Lastly, we added a, you know, a new bike crossing along the west side of this intersection. Since, like I mentioned previously, you can pretty much go any direction here if you're on a bike. So now we'll look at the Army-Navy Drive-Pentagon City Mall intersections. It was a zoomed-in view of it on the right and the 30% design plan on the left. The big change here was, you know, for the west median nose, extending it to provide a median refuge. That same thing I mentioned previously at the Joyce, and that's what that looks like. So that just provides better protection for the pedestrians and shortens the crossing distance. One of the changes we kind of made for the worst, going from 30% to 9%, was that we're proposing a bunch of modifications along the malls frontage here to kind of consolidate accesses and things. But that was getting like, we were going way out of their property to do that work, and it was getting kind of expensive easement-wise. So we greatly cut back the amount of work along their frontage and tried to just kind of keep what they had existing there. So here's the right-of-way acquisition plans for this, basically this block between Joyce and Hayes. There's no easements or anything needed at the Joyce Street intersection. But when we get to the mall intersection, we need two small temporary construction easements from Pentagon Row. We need fairly large easements still from the mall. And then on the north side, we need some, just some small temporary construction easements from the Pentagon for their parking lot. So now we'll talk about the section between the mall and Hayes Street. So this section, we're actually like adding a new lane, so we can add dual lefts turning into the mall. And then again, the curb-side lanes will be the dedicated transit lanes. And the bike lane will be on your right on the south side. So this is what the existing view looks like today in the AM peak hour. There's a really heavy movement coming off 395 northbound that turns right. The Hayes Army-Navy Drive intersection, and then they immediately dart over to the left lane to turn into the mall garage to either hop on the metro there or cross and go into the Pentagon to work. So that's basically the reason why we added that second left turn lane there. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we're changing all the left-turn signal phasing for the westbound movements to protect it only. So that eliminates the conflict between the crosswalk and bike crossing and the left-turn movement. And so, but when we did that, that reduces the amount of green time they get. So that extra left turn lane really helps things, really improved the operations along the corridor and stuff, as well as the safety. So you can see a 30% plan. Here's the 90% plan. As I mentioned, we've changed those unsignalized accesses to the, basically the Macy's store over there on the wall. So we'll zoom in to the 90% plan at Hayes and Army-Navy Drive. On the left is the old 30% plan. So I'll just highlight some of the big changes. One of the best changes we made was we signaledize the right-turn movement coming southbound off the 395 northbound ramps. And that's a big change because previously it was just going to be like an uncontrolled pedestrian crossing over the slip lane, basically. So now that the crosswalk there will be controlled by pedestrian signal heads, and the right-turn movement will be controlled by these right-turn arrow signal heads. So, you know, when they have the green arrow, there's no crosswalk. The crosswalk will be on the walk and vice versa. And when they have the red arrow, the crosswalk will be on the walk sign. So we're limiting that conflict between the vehicles turning right and the pedestrians crossing that slip lane. We also changed the striping here so that we could get rid of, basically, a weave that we were creating where the vehicles using that slip lane were getting into the bus lane essentially, and we didn't want them there. We wanted them in the middle lane so that, because the buses here are coming up north on Hayes Street, then they turn left. So we wanted to get them out of the way. And by signaling that right turn lane, we also removed the weave there as well, the conflict with the buses, because when the buses have that protected northbound left phase, there's no, the signal head for the right turn will be red. So we'll get rid of that. In the southeast corner there, we added a curb island, like I mentioned previously. This is like similar to Joyce Streets for the additional queuing space. In this case, we also think it reduces the chance of a right turn accidentally turning onto the cycle track here, since there's a much smaller opening now. I just want to highlight something on the southwest corner. This is called a, basically a bend-out corner island. There's not many of these in the United States yet, but essentially the whole point of it is, is that if you're turning right in a vehicle, it gives you a more preferred angle to see, you know, crossing pedestrians and cyclists when you're making that right turn. In this case, we actually don't have a conflict because we're signaling the right turn movement. So when they have the green light, the crosswalk and the bike signals here will be red. So, but in this case, it just helps if an older driver, you know, doesn't, basically disregards the signal head or the cyclist or pedestrian disregards their walk sign, then, you know, it just gives better sight distance and improves the safety. As far as right-of-way acquisition, this intersection, we just did a small temporary construction easement in the northwest corner. Now, moving further east, the block between Hayes and East Street. Here, we're dropping a lane and going to basically two lanes in each direction and then with the turn lane, and then having the cycle track once again on the right of the page, the south side is the existing view of it. This is the 30% plan. And here's the new 90% plan. So we'll talk about what's going on at the Army-Navy-South Fern Street intersection, because it's zoomed in view of it. This is the 30% plan. So one thing we've done here is, again, we've extended the median noses to provide those pedestrian median refuges for the north. The north-south crossings on both sides of the intersection, we're able to do that. We added some bike boxes in the southeast corner of the intersection. This is because Fern Street's the primary bike access to and from the Pentagon. So there's lots of cyclists that will be using this road to get there. So that's why we've added that, so they have room to wait and to make their turning movements. We also extended the bike lane that, like, just back to that driveway. The hotel in the southeast corner here is actually being torn down right now, so it's actually going to be gone in a few weeks. As part of that, we also closed that, basically that median break for the driveway open, since there won't be a hotel there anymore. Now, I'll talk about the block between Fern Street and East Street. You know, this block, like on westbound, there's two existing bus stops. These have really high ridership. And so they're actually, like, our traffic model showed that those two stops, because there's so many buses there, and they're using both of them, it causes traffic to back up into the southeast street intersection. So we're consolidating those two bus stops into just one kind of big double bus stop there, where we'll have either one big shelter or two smaller shelters, as well as, you know, trash recycling, that, those types of things. Now, I'll talk about the southeast street Army-Navy Drive intersection. This is the 9% design plans on the right, 30% plans on the left. So we made some major changes in the southeast corner here. We added a protected intersection element with that little island there. Basically, again, reducing that possibility that somebody would turn right into the cycle track, provide more protection to crossing pedestrians and cyclists here. In this case, the community wanted us to add a median nose to the east approach, but we didn't have room due to the turning movement coming southbound left. So we are adding these kind of flexi-post bollards to create like a striped median nose to just provide, like, you know, slow vehicles down, things like that. As far as right-of-way acquisitions, this is one of two slides. But going back to the South Fern Street Army-Navy Drive intersection, we just need a small temporary construction easement from, well, it used to be the hotel and now it's Amazon. And then on the north side, we need a small temporary construction easement where we're, you know, kind of redoing some of the curb ramps to get ADA compliance at the Pentagon's South Fern Street parking lot entrance. And then at the Army-Navy East Street intersection, we need a temporary construction easement in the southwest corner from Amazon. That property is currently owned by JBG Smith. That's for our signal equipment and, you know, to get that ADA compliance for the curb ramps. And then on the northeast corner of the project, we need a large temporary construction easement from the Pentagon to basically kind of do some regrading at the parking lot to get that driveway apron that we're proposing there to work out. Right now, the sidewalk currently ends basically at the Route 110 off-ramp. And so we're providing that missing link of sidewalk to get people to the East Street intersection where they can then cross and go wherever they want. Then the last block of the project, it's quite a bit of a different block traffic-wise than the other blocks. This block has, you know, much less volume on it, only about 7,000 vehicles per day. So on this block, we're dropping a travel lane each direction. And the new row will just have two lanes. But what it'll look, what it looked like on the 30% plan, we didn't make a whole lot of changes to this block on the 90% plan. We got a lot of comments at the 12th Street Army-Navy Drive intersection, where this project is going to signalize that intersection in conjunction with another project to the south here, the 12th Street Complete Streets project. We'll zoom in to the new 90% plan here and the 30% plan over there. You know, one of the big comments we got from our last design workshop was that we just had really poor connectivity between the bike lanes along the south side of Army-Navy and then the new shared-use path that'll be on the north side of 12th Street under the bridge. That's in the, kind of the top right of this graphic. And so, you know, we added some, we basically pulled the, you know, the utility strip, provide protection for the bike lane to the south just to provide more protection from vehicles turning right. We added a corner island over to protect cyclists that want to go, basically, southbound right there to go west on 12th Street. We split up the, we used to have one large curb ramp for both the bike crossing and the pedestrian crossing. We split this up, you know, it'll look kind of like this. We'll paint the bike crossing ramp green, and it won't have a detectable warning surface at the bottom of it. We also added, we widened 12th Street to the north to add a right turn lane. This provides really good safety benefits. We, the community requested that we restrict the eastbound left turn from 12th on the Army-Navy. So we implemented that change. So it'll be a no-left turn sign. By adding that eastbound right turn lane, that gives us the opportunity to signalize that lane with a protected-only phase. So we were able to add bike signals for the, basically that east-west bike crossing here. Since, you know, so when the bike, when the green bike signal goes and the bike list's on the right of web, everybody else is stopped and nobody can conflict with that movement. So now we'll just kind of summarize all the traffic signal operations for the corridor. You know, there'll be bike signals at Hayes Street, Army-Navy Drive, that intersection, as well as at the Army-Navy Drive 12th Street intersection. The two intersections on the west side of the project, you know, we don't have the dedicated right turn lanes. It's just a shared through right lane. So we just, we'll have this kind of custom sign that says turning vehicles built to bikes and it has two arrows so that people know that, you know, cyclists will be coming from in front of them as well as behind them. At these intersections, cyclists will use the pedestrian crossing signals to cross, to know when they can cross. At the Fern Street-East Street intersections, we have dedicated right turn lanes, and these also have heavier right turn lines. So we're going to use the flashing right arrow to control the right turn movement. So it just gives people more, more So it just gives people more, um, more compliance as far as like knowing, hey, there's going to be, you know, crossing pedestrians and cyclists that are going to be conflicting with my movement. Um, and it's similar at those two intersections, the cyclist will use the, they'll use the pedestrian signal indication to know when they can cross. Uh, so to, to review that, the Army Navy Drive, South Hayes Street intersection, this is with north pointing left. So the cycle track's on the right. So basically when the opposing left turn goes, everybody stopped here. The right turn stopped, the cycle track stopped. And then the cycle track will get the green as well as the pedestrian walk sign. They'll get the green. Nobody else, no other cars will be conflicting with this, this movement. And then when, when they, they get stopped, then that's when the right turn arrow will go for the, the eastbound right turn movement. There's a lot of buses also make these bound right turns. So this is how we're eliminating that, that right hook turning conflict. Um, as I kind of mentioned previously, at the Fern Street, East Street intersections, we're not doing that protected right turn phase with the bike signals. Um, there's just, there was, it didn't really work out capacity wise, but we think we have a good alternative with the, the flashing right arrow. And, you know, all these intersections, we are restricting the right turns on red for the eastbound approaches and the northbound approaches. So there'll be no rights on reds that conflict with the, the bike crossing and pedestrian crosswalks. And then at Joy Street in the mall garage, it's just be a, a solid green ball for the control of the right tournament. That's because those are through right movements. So we can't use any arrows. I guess just kind of to review everything. Uh, corridor wide, you know, all the westbound left turn movements, that's going to be protected only phasing. So, so none of those will ever conflict with the, the crosswalks or pedestrian cross, uh, the bike crossings. Uh, and then at East and Army Navy, we're restricting the left turn movement. There's very few lefts there. Most of them are coming off the Route one-ten ramp and weaving over there. And that was causing a lot of issues in the model and stuff. And it just seems like it's better if they want to go that way. They can take, uh, continue south on one-ten and then turn right on the fifteenth street. Uh, street light wise, we're basically redoing all the street line along the corridor with, uh, these teardrop style overhead lights, similar to what's on, uh, South Hayes Street today. Um, if you go on the website and look at the, the, the design plans, that's what the, the symbol is for this type of street light. We also have in the median a few spots and that, those have lights on both sides of the pole. So that's all that means. And there's two spots where we're not replacing the existing lights and that's at the Alter Building that opened like last year, I think, uh, just, uh, east of East Street. We're keeping their, they, they installed brand new streetlights. So we're keeping those. And then at Pentagon Row, we're also keeping the Carlisle Street lights that they installed. Um, and then on the, between, uh, the mall and Joy Street on the north of Army Navy, there's a, a project that's shelved already, but unfunded for the Army Navy Transit Center. That's going to put in sawtooth space and they have their own special type of light that's proposed for that project. Um, so we're not actually putting lights on that north side there because it would just be torn out. So. Uh, and stormwater, the county has a really strong commitment to, you know, reducing storm water runoff and managing it better. And so we're meeting, you know, all the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality requirements here. And we're purchasing water quality credits in accordance with that. Uh, we're adding over forty new curb inlets to reduce the runoff along the road. And we're greatly reducing the amount of, uh, paved area on this project. And it's about eighteen thou, eighteen thousand five hundred square feet. Uh, it's about like a third of an acre, uh, that will be replaced with grass and trees. Uh, and on the left, this project, we're using a kind of a new type of inlet where, you know, we, we basically, it has like an expanded throat to capture more water. So it'll look a little different from the, the endless you used to see in Arlington. Uh, this project is federally funded, so therefore we have to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act of nineteen sixty-nine, also known as NEPA. Uh, it's an umbrella act that basically Congress can add to it as well as the president's executive orders can, can modify it. So, because we're not really having a significant environmental impact, because most of our work, work is between the existing curbs. We didn't need to do an environmental assessment or environmental impact statement. Um, therefore we qualify for a, a Virginia programmatic category exclusion, also known as a PCE. Viat prepared this and it was approved on October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Uh, this project didn't have any impact to historic properties, um, endangered species or streams or wetlands as well as parklands. And therefore we didn't propose any environmental mitigation me, measures. And then, uh, now I'll talk about how the sequence of construction for the project. Uh, the first phase of the project, the contractor will basically is between Joyce and, and 12th Street. And they'll take out all the existing raised medians. This will just give them more room to work. When they do the rest of the project, they'll put in new striping to accordingly. Uh, the second phase will be where they basically build out everything on the south side and the north side of the project, as well as of the intersection corners. And so they'll kind of go through this, you know, one block at a time. They'll start here between South Fern Street and Southeast Street on that south side. That's where, uh, the Amazon campus will be going. And that basically we want to start there so we can just kind of get out of their way. And we won't have any like overlapping conflicting lane closures between those two projects. Uh, but after they do that, that block, they'll go back to the west and start at South Joy Street and then work their way east. And after they finish each, each section, they'll open the cycle track there once the block is done, uh, rather than wait to the final completion of the project. The third phase of the project will be putting back the new medians that are proposed for the project. Um, then the fourth phase is to do the final mill and overlay. And the fifth phase is to do all the final, uh, pavement markings and signing. Uh, here's the, the current project cost estimate. Uh, you know, it's about a one point seven million dollars for the PE phase. That's basically all the planning, engineering costs. Uh, all the costs to prepare all the bid packages and things like that. Uh, we have hundred thirty-five thousand for the right of way and utility relocation phase. And then we're anticipating in the, the construction phase will be coming around fourteen million dollars. So, so overall, it's about a fifteen million dollar, eight hundred seventy thousand dollar project. Um, as I mentioned previously, uh, the NO, MBTA awarded us, um, a bunch of funding for the construction phase of the project. So we're very, uh, appreciative of that. Um, and then I'll talk about the schedule, how, where we're going from here. We're currently at this public hearing today, November twenty twenty. Uh, this is a requirement based on the federal funding that we have for the project. Um, we're current, we, we wrapped up the ninety percent design plan back in August. So we're revising that right now for the, the comments. And we expect to be done with all the design by next summer. And we plan to advertise the, the project for construction next fall. And usually in the county, it takes us about six months from the time we advertise, the time we actually like break ground. So therefore we, we anticipate that will be starting construction in the spring of twenty twenty-two. We think that this project will be about a two and a half year duration. Again, the country will be working like block to block. So it won't be a huge disruption. You know, they'll, they'll just, they won't be working on the whole segment at once, aside from that very first phase where they take out the median. So. So therefore we think we'll have completion in fall twenty twenty-four. You know, this is the, uh, if you want to see the, the project files, the design plans or the environmental document, they're available at the project website. That's the link there. Um, if you want to see hard copies of this stuff, uh, please call that number that's shown in the notes section. That, that's my phone number. We can arrange to have you come into the office and, and see those files. Um, and then to submit your comments, you can either send me an email. You can leave a voicemail. You can send me, uh, just regular mail. You can provide comments in the chat window of this, uh, this team's meeting. And you can also arrange to come to the office and provide these in person by calling me ahead of time. Uh, all comments are due by Friday, December fourth. Um, and then this is the, the final slide for you all to start asking questions.
John, thank you very much for that.
Much for that. Very, uh, very, uh, complete presentation.
I have just added a thing to the project page, uh, for folks, uh, joining us on this me, uh, meeting to click through to if they'd like to access that project page now. And we have a number of questions that we've received throughout the presentation. That we are, I'm going to start running through. Uh, I'm going to try and address some of the sort of more corridor wide comments, uh, questions first with you, John, if that works for you. And then we've had a number of comments about the, uh, Joyce Street intersection that I think we can sort of address as a group. So we're going to start with a question for Brahm Mandel from the National Landing Bid, uh, who asked about the speed limit. Uh, and how the speed limit will be affected by this project, uh, and whether or not it'll be reduced to improve safety.
Yeah. So we designed the project, um, they're basically in accordance with the thirty-five hour speed limit. You know, we, we tightened the corner radius as much as possible for all the turning movements. Um, symbolized in our, it's set by the county board. So we don't really have any current plans to, uh, propose a reduction in speed limit along this corridor.
Okay. Uh, we had a positive comment from, uh, Transportation Commissioner Darren Buck about revisions. So I want to make sure I shared that with you that they look, he says they look great and news about redesigning the block west of the project corridor is fantastic. Uh, a question, uh, that's a Joyce Street question. We're going to group those together. That is also, we had a number of Joyce Street questions. Question from Garrett Henigan, will this project include any kind of transit signal priority?
No, uh, the county doesn't have any like, I guess, current plans for that, um, like anywhere countywide. But, um, yeah, we weren't proposing it in this project.
Okay. He followed up with a question about transit delay and whether that is expect, how much transit delay is expected from the combined right-hand turns?
Um, not, not really much. The only spot on Army Navy Drive that the, the buses turn right is that Hayes Street. They basically had East and Army Navy Drive and make a right on Hayes Street. Uh, you know, we modeled it with the, uh, protected only right turn phase. And, uh, you know, we are removing that bus stop that's currently there in that southwest corner of that intersection, which is not ADA accessible. And by removing that stop, getting the, you know, the buses were stopping there and then basically, you know, blocking all the traffic. And so by taking that spot and consolidating it in front of the Pentagon Row, Harris Teeter, we're really improving that, that movement's delay and operation. So. Um, we don't think, you know, the, the project still has very significant, uh, transit travel time reductions. Uh, just based on all the dedicated transit lanes and then that, that right turn movement I talked about, it'll also have some right turn overlaps that, you know, when the other side street left turn phases go, they can go during that time too. So.
Okay. I just, I'm just going to try and interpret Garrett's question here a little bit. I think it may have been referring to the combination of right turning vehicle movements with transit throughput. Uh, is there an issue with expected transit delay to, uh, when combining those movements?
Not really. There's, um, there's very few right turns into the, the Pentagon City parking garage. And then as far as the, on the north side of that Pentagon, South Hayes Street parking lot, they've removed a ton of their parking spaces there as to add that tour bus parking loop that was put in a few years ago. Uh, so there's really not a whole lot of cars turning into that lot anymore. And then when the, the Army Navy Transit Center is built in that, uh, northwest part of the parking lot, that's going to take away pretty much all the remaining parking spaces on that side of the lot. So it's really just going to be buses that are turning into that, that parking lot over there. So there won't be many right turns.
Understood. All right. Moving on to another question from, uh, Commissioner Buck. Uh, love the new controlled right off three ninety-five at South Hayes Street. Is there enough queue space for right turning cars? And if not, is there a possibility of reducing the through lanes onto Hayes to two to increase queuing space and open up lane reduction possibilities on Hayes?
It's the existing, um, right turn lane is only like a, it's a short right turn bay. It's not, it's not like a full lane that comes off the, uh, the interstate. And so that's why it didn't really have much of a, signalizing that movement didn't really have much of an impact on the, you know, the turns there. You know, because right now it's a yield condition. And so, you know, the coming off that, that southbound approach has a ton of traffic. It has about, um, probably one of the highest left turn movements in the entire county coming off that, that interstate. And so as a result, they get a ton of green time. So that just clears out that, that right turn queue. And the right turn movement is the smallest movement of all those, those southbound approach movements there. Uh, we've looked at repurposing one of the, the three southbound through lanes to another, to a second left turn lane. Uh, we actually designed the, um, basically the receiving lane to accommodate dual lefts if we ever need to do that in the future. Uh, we're right now, we're just, uh, there's so much developmental change. We're just not sure how that, that through left breakdown is going to work out once everything's built out here.
Okay. Another question from Rob Mandel at the National Landing Bid. In the segment that includes the mall entrance, there is a small access alley that has a gentle turning movement across the bike facility. Uh, he's asking if that is to accommodate trucks and is that entrance open to the general public?
Um, are you talking about like the loading dock entrance at Pentagon Row?
I believe so. I believe it was the seg, the second segment of the project quarter that you showed.
Yes, the one at, uh, Pentagon Row, I'll try to go back there. Uh, the one, um, basically in the, uh, southwest corner of the ninety percent drawing here on the right side of the screen. Uh, you know, that, that's the, the loading entrance to the grocery store. And so we, we had to design that opening to accommodate the large tractor trailers that, that go back there to drop off, you know, all this, the stuff to the shopping center. So.
Great. All right. I think that answers that. And since we're here on this particular graphic, let's address some of the questions that we got about the Joyce Street intersection. Uh, I want to, I'm going to read them all to you and we're going to try and lump this into a single answer because uh, I'm sure, uh, you will be able to show how all of the different users uh, that are being accommodated by this project have specific needs and we have to coordinate between them. So a question from an anonymous, uh, viewer here this afternoon. How do protected left turn lanes reduce traffic congestion if left turns are not permitted without a green arrow? Specifically at the intersection of Army Navy and Joyce Street, the traffic study completed for the project shows significant left turn delays. So there's a question there about, uh, traffic operations for vehicles. We also have a statement from another anonymous, uh, viewer who says all left turns into Pentagon Row for Army Navy Drive today will have to U-turn at Joyce Street or turn left onto Joyce Street. The traffic study does not show or account for the left, resulting left turns at Joyce. Uh, comment from Commissioner Buck. One missing element from the Joyce Street intersection, no space for westbound Army Navy cyclists to go nor, to queue to go north on the east side trail. The primary trail side that Columbia Pike and the ANC, Army, the, uh, ANC wall trail concepts will create demand for. And then from user PVH. At Joyce and Army Navy Drive, will drivers have left turn lights from all directions with a no turn on red light? And can ha, can pedestrians have leading pedestrian intervals here? Currently left turning drivers cut us off. And I believe that is referring to the pedestrian movement.
Okay. Um, yeah. So for the, the eastbound or the, I mean, the westbound left turn movement, um, you know, generally the delay for that is in the, the afternoon peak hour. Um, and there, because there's not much traffic there on the, the AM peak hour going that direction. But, um, you know, the protective movement, you know, when there's a lot of conflicting traffic with that approach, uh, it allows them to, you know, just kind of clear out that queue and stuff. Um, we don't think it would be too bad. I mean, right now the, the peak hour traffic lines are like down significantly in this corridor. Even though the, you know, a lot of the Pentagon, uh, employees are still showing up to the office. But it's like the AM and PM peak hour lines are way down right now. Uh, so we're not sure that, that delay will ever be realized over there. Let's see, for the, um.
Cyclists queuing was another element of that combo question.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. I think when the, the future Columbia Pike project's built, I'm not sure if there will be really a preferred side of which side. You know, north of the center section you want to be on as far as on South Joyce, whether you want to be on the east or west side. Uh, when we do the other, the project to the west to turn Army Navy to add those protected bike lanes, uh, that we can kind of carve out some queuing space there. You want to, if you're going westbound, want to head north. I always think you'd also queue basically in that, that southeast corner where we have the, uh, the corner island. You know, that's a twelve foot wide space. It's, it's a lot of room to, you know, some, if one cyclist or one or two cyclists want to wait there. You also queue in the, the crosswalks, those are ten foot wide pedestrian crosswalks and then the, the bike crosswalks, like I think five or six feet wide, um, over there. So, so there's a lot, I think a lot of space there that you're away from the, the turning movements that you can queue at to wait for your, your chance to cross.
Okay. And then for the pedestrian movements and signalization, uh, are, this is actually a broader question we received at this, uh, regarding this project as well. Are leading pedestrian intervals part of the signalization plan?
Uh, we haven't really talked about that, but we can, uh, ask our signal design consultant to, to look at that. They haven't really designed the final signal times yet for the corridor. So we can, we can look at that, uh, providing that. They haven't really designed the final signal times yet for the corridor. So we can, we can look at that, providing that.
Okay, so that's a good follow up for us now. Let's see here. I want to make sure we get to everyone's questions that I've published so far. And I know we've got a couple more in the queue that I haven't quite gotten a chance to get to. Okay, what do we think the per, the the predicted impact will be on congestion volumes for protected lefts and no turn on red regulations throughout this corridor? We have someone, an anonymous folk asking about stating that the impact will add to congestion and not reduce it.
Well, the traffic site showed that overall that we reduce delay for, basically for all the vehicles. There's certain intersections where where increases, but also by decreases at other intersections. Today, a lot of the the westbound movements don't even have like dedicated left turn lanes to them. And then when they do, something like the AM move, the morning peak hour, you know, most of the traffic here is going eastbound. So you know, under today's signal phasing, you don't have that protective movement at some of the intersections. So you end up having to wait a long time to to make that left turn. So that's, that's one of the ways they're reducing it. We're, you know, greatly reducing at the mall intersection by having that second left turn lane there. It really cuts the the delay there a lot. What was the the other part of it?
Just no right turn on red.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's, there's lots of right movements at pretty much all these intersections, but, you know, there you can't always really make a right turn just because there's conflicting traffic. But it's more of a safety thing and it didn't, it didn't adversely impact the delay that much here. So.
Okay. A question about the South Hayes Street intersection. Why not extend the northern median through the crosswalk to provide additional protection?
Yeah, so the only reasons we didn't do that was because we wanted to, you know, basically when you had the the southbound left going concurrently with the northbound left turn, there wouldn't be enough room there for them to make that left turn. We also wanted to provide space in the future if we want to repurpose that say that leftmost southbound through lane to a second left turn lane that we still have room to do that. And that's kind of why we didn't extend, we weren't able to extend that median nose through the crosswalk. And we also don't anticipate too many crossings along this this north crosswalk. It doesn't currently exist and the only destination there is the Lamont Substation, that kind of top left corner of that that image. I don't, you know, too many people are really going to be using that.
Okay. Okay, I think we have addressed all of the questions in the published queue. I know we have a couple more. Transportation Committee Chair, Commission Chair Chris Slatt has weighed in with one that I'm going to publish now. For the 90% design appears to allow left turns into and out of the Doubletree Hotel parking garage across the two way protected bike lane. How will bicyclist safety be maintained here? He states that drivers are not accustomed to expecting bicycle traffic to be approaching from behind them and are unlikely to be looking for cyclists.
Yeah, so on this this section, it's just a, trying to get over there. It's a small, it's just two lanes, one lane each direction here. We, you kind of see, we originally had a wide median here, but we couldn't build that due to fire code restrictions. And so as a result, we had this really large space between the cycle track and the eastbound travel lane. And so that's large enough to where if you want to turn into like, you know, the Alter, the the Doubletree, you can stop your car at the edge of the the cycle track and then your car doesn't stick out into the eastbound travel line. So you can kind of stop there and wait and see if you can cross. And similarly, you know, when you're turning out of that entrance, you can do the same thing. You don't have to, you basically look both ways, see if the cycle track's clear, you cross that and you stop, you know, in that space there. It's it's large enough to just hold a car before you turn into the traffic.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Slatt also has a another question specifically about how this project corridor will connect with the proposed one block connection at the western end of the segment. He states, happy to hear about the new CIP project to extend the protected bike lane to Lynn Street, but hopeful that some cheap temporary changes at least can be made as a result of this project as I'm sure a new capital project will take years to come to fruition. This project, I think he was here referring to
A new project.
The new project, this project will make it so that only a single westbound through lane approaches Joyce. Yet the design shows three lanes to receive a single lane of traffic on the west side. Can a simple restriping with plastic ballers be needed on Army Navy west of Joyce using space from the existing drop lane until the capital project arrives to fully save the day? I know this is a little out of scope of your project that we're presenting on here, but I think it it speaks to how it's going to integrate with the transportation network.
Yeah, so the the new project, you know, basically requires this project to be built first, but it, you know, we, like, like I said, you know, once we build the section between Fern and Eads, then we'll build the section at Joyce. So we think that, you know, we could, we could start construction on that almost concurrently with, once we finish the the block of this project between Joyce and the mall. You know, we just started that, the planning that project, we, you know, we'll probably do engagement to kind of see what people want. Do they want the two way protected cycle track on the south side for that block? Or do they want one way protected bike lanes in each direction? So it will kind of get people's feedback on it. We have no space to do. Either or doesn't really, you know, impact too much. But, you know, we think that's a pretty simple project. We don't need any right of way. We have existing easement from the river house and things. So we don't, it's really not, it, you know, it would probably be the same design team that's doing this one that does that one. So it should be, that one should be a lot quicker.
Okay. We got one more question and I think it gives you a nice chance to to summarize the contents of this presentation, John, from Anonymous. Could you speak generally to what you think are the top changes made from the 30% plans to these 90% plans?
Yeah, I think, you know, we had a lot of complaints about the the curb ramp design on the 30% plan. So I think by, you know, reordering, how we basically redesigned all the curb ramps in the project area. So I think, you know, the way they're now aligned to the crossings will really help. I think, you know, a lot of the signalization changes we made will really improve the the safety along the course. Preventing fatalities and reducing serious injury collisions and things like that.
Okay. Well, I I believe that is the the end of our questions here. I have nothing else in the question queue. So I want to thank you, John, for bringing this very comprehensive 90% design presentation to the public and to thank our partners at NVTA and at the Virginia Department of Transportation and the Federal Highways Administration for their funding support of this project. Again, the feedback window for this 90% design engagement is open through December 4. And you can find information on submitting your comments here on the slide. You can, you can submit them via email, by voicemail, you can send physical mail. You can comment at here at the public hearing. These, these comments and a transcript and recording of this question and answer session and presentation will be available on the project website later this week. And you are also able to request an in-person review of the project materials here, 90% design and environmental and other regulatory documentation by calling the number on your screen and requesting an appointment to view those documents at the county HQ building in Courthouse. Thank you very much for the kind words in the Q and A. We work hard to do these virtual engagements as best we can, given the circumstances. So thank you, everyone, for joining us this afternoon. Please be safe. And hopefully we will hear from you about this project soon. Take care.
Thanks.